And tonight, we have recommendation of one bid. The bids that we opened for the software program, we have started to review them. And that's going to probably be a two, three, four month review of those bids. Susan has appointed a, basically a steering committee to review those bids. We've had our first meeting and gone through them and started to make our own questions. We will then go from there to invite the vendors in to basically tell us what's in their bids. We also want to make some visits to cities that use their product. And so, as far as the software, it will not be something that we'll be making a recommendation on in a very quick process. The generator bid process, which one of you want to speak to that?
I'll speak to it. We got, we got two bids. One was opened up and read as 106,000. It actually turns out to be 111,100 and the second one to 122,000. The, we, power, which is the 111,000, is from a company in Miami, Florida. And we feel like we need to be sure that we can get it serviced here and all of that and not have to pay for somebody coming from Miami. And Michael has been trying to get in contact with and has left some written questions for them to respond to that they have not gotten back to us yet. We've been unable to determine why Wayne Supply did not bid yet either. We still want to kind of know why, if there was something in the bid that they didn't like or some reason why they would not have bid it. So we're not ready to make a recommendation, request a recommendation at this time. We still have some questions and we still want to do some research before we decide what we would recommend.
And this generator is to fully power up the water plant?
Yes.
So say this Cummins, I'm sure it's got a Cummins engine on it. Will all of them have the same engine on it or don't?
General Power has a Volvo. The lower priced one is a Volvo engine. There's Cummins engine and Wayne Supply would have been the Caterpillar.
Caterpillar Cummins. Just off the top of your head, you'd think one of those would be better looking.
Well, from the reputation.
But I mean, we need to get worked on.
Cummins, Cummins is good too. We're not as familiar with the Volvo.
I'd agree with that, but still, yeah.
And there was a reason the cost is more than we anticipated.
Yeah, that also, I'm sorry. We had, we had originally worked on a 500 kilowatt generator for the water plant. And we got ready to finally submit the bid. And so we had that pricing in the 85 to 100,000 dollar range. When, when we got the engineer's report, they said that it needed to be a 600 kilowatt generator, consequently the higher price. And so when the mayor spoke about that is higher than we expected, it was higher than we expected for the 500, but it was a different generator than what, than what we had talked with the mayor about. It is higher than, and it's still higher than we had hoped.
So does Cummins, does their generator meet the standards at the second?
I mean, I think both of them meet the standards. We're questioning the maintenance and, you know, we would want a, we would want a, at least semi-annual, for somebody to come in and maintain and service it. We, of course, will put it on a monthly exercise program.
Maybe a regular or something with it.
And so, so we're wanting to be sure that, that all of those pieces are going to fit together too.
And a warranty, I guess, too, right?
Correct.
You want to make sure of this. What about Wayne, you haven't touched base with them yet?
We have not.
Doesn't make sense, does it?
Yeah, we haven't. It would have been, it would have been higher priced.
I think so.
Yeah. You know, for them not to bid at all, it's kind of concerning. So, any, any other questions or comments or suggestions of what we need to look for?
The company's Miami, you're dealing with?
Well, the one is from Miami, yeah. The other is, Cummins is Kentucky.
That's a little while.
Had a little while, yeah.
Okay. Just aside, you know, Volvo, there's an awful lot of Volvo trucks on the road.
Right.
Heavy, heavy earth movers.
Right. No, no, no. It's definitely a reputable company. That's, I'm just not as familiar with it, you know. But no, no, we've got, we've got no issue with the fact that that's what it is.
Right.
Other than, other than do they have a service, you know, maintenance place closer to, than Miami, Florida? So.
And the one bid that we will recommend this evening has to do with the bleacher bid that was up. This is bleachers for the new soccer field and the new football field behind the Intergeneration Center. We have a pad to place the soccer bleachers on. We were installing them ourselves when they come in. We will have to bid or build a pad at the football field, so.
Are they 100 feet long?
Yes.
And ADA? Go ahead.
Well, they're ADA accessible and then they include the one and quarter inch size chain link guardrail. On any bleachers that we install new or replace. So, and they're five rows and 21 feet in length. And we received two bids for, from different companies. One is Mesa Sports Advantage, which is out of Indiana. And their bid came in at 13,393 dollars and 80 cents. And then BSN Sports, their bid came in at 17,728 dollars and 28 cents. And I would like to make the recommendation that we go with Mesa.
Was any difference in the quality of the bleacher, they both bid the same?
Exactly the same bleachers.
Same.
Maggie, how high is, what did you say, the back, the highest from the ground?
20.
21 feet in length. They're five rows high.
Right, so they're.
Well, probably.
40 feet.
Five feet higher.
At the ballpark.
Same thing we have at our softball courts now.
What's the name? Mesa?
Mesa. Mid-America Sports Advantage is, this is the acronym.
How much?
It was 13,393 dollars and 80 cents.
What's your delivery time? What's their delivery time?
Two to four weeks. Takes about two to four weeks.
Any objection to that?
Why wouldn't they?
My bleachers are bleachers. We can pay a little more, but I like to get it.
I didn't think you were going to sit back and cheat with me.
But see, I'm a bargain hunter. Bargain hunter.
Shopper.
And a shopper.
Scrapyard.
You got it. And their money at the junkyard.
We'll make that recommendation.
Thank you.
Next, we've got economic development issues. We've got three items. One is the convention center RFP. The second is the Southern Growth Policies Board proposal. And lastly, is the Berea Economic Development Strategies that we've been discussing in part. The city is ready to put out the RFP for the convention center as we discussed in the strategic planning session. A copy is going around. Take one and pass them on. This is the revised version that we discussed at the strategic planning session to reassess what response we might be able to get and utilize that as another aspect of our planning.
Now, this year says community center, so that's what we're actually, instead of convention center, community center, right?
Well, if we turn to the scope of work portion of that, you will see the way we ask the proposed vendor to evaluate the issue. And so it's a gathering of information and a recommendation on feasibility. Come next one.
I think I've gone through from the comments that's made on our strategic plan and made the changes and nomenclature as far as community centers is what I tried to craft back then to actually give the freedom to whoever gets the RFP to determine what our community needs.
Pages six and seven break down the scope of work. City of Berea, Kentucky will use a phased approach for the project. Three separated parts. In conducting this study, the vendor should garner input from local stakeholders, other available information as listed. The vendor will work to evaluate the local market to determine if the community center project may be feasible in Berea. This portion of the study will answer the following questions. And then at list seven, is there a market demand for a community center in Berea? Explain the metrics that support your conclusion. What market would a successful Berea center serve? Include a description of the scope, elements of the programming and target markets to support your conclusion. To what extent will the availability or absence of alcohol affect marketability? What size of facility is appropriate for Berea? Describe the model facility in terms of the services it would provide. Building square footage, number of employees to operate and expected cost of operation. And as you can begin to see, as you, as a vendor would go down through these questions and be able to respond, you're going to get a shape of something that is possibly feasible and it will look like a community center or it will look like a convention center or it will look like some kind of hybrid. So rather than putting some kind of name on it, with the questions, the vendor is going to be, hopefully, shaping through responses what might work and what it would look like in Berea. What market constraints or issues would be necessary for Berea to overcome or deal with appropriately to have a successful center? Include development, construction costs. Six, can a Berea community center be tax neutral and sustainable in that? If so, describe the strategies that can make this possible. Public-private partnership, for example. Specific economic development tools. Lastly, should energy efficiencies and/or alternate energy sources be a part of any such facility? If yes, why and how? So those are, those are some specific questions about the Berea market that might, you know, shape what, what the recommended facility would look like.
Mayor, are we looking possibly for a facility to serve both community center and convention center, one building?
That, if that's feasible. I guess what we're looking for is what would be feasible in Berea with this type, I mean, with our market and with the information. And so we're asking some knowledgeable person to take the demographics and the geographical location and, you know, whatever elements are appropriate and respond to these ways. And you may have differing views by differing vendors, but, but what, what the RFP is meant to generate is the name of somebody and the amount of money that somebody would charge to do what is listed as deliverables, to produce those deliverables. And we're not going to get any kind of picture with this RFP. We would get a proposal of what they would do to try to respond effectively to this question.
I have a question. Have we thought about rolling this into the other RFP that we're talking about in terms of economic development strategies? Because it would seem to me that one of the things that we're looking at with this is an economic strategy. And that would be gathered regarding whether or not, and what this would look like, would be the same information that we would be gathering for an overall economic development strategy. So I guess my question is, is this sort of a duplication of effort? Would it be not more efficient to roll them in together?
That's certainly a decision for the council to make. We discussed that at the strategic planning session and the thinking was it would make sense to go ahead and put it out, see what kind of information that we got back. The decision wouldn't be made then, but that information might, might be folded into the developing economic development process that we had going possibly. It doesn't have to be that way though.
I think Diane, when you asked that question, you're correct in that is the community center, convention center meetings, that is that an economic development strategy?
I'm going to agree with you, Diane.
And I know it is going to bring out a lot of both the same things. I think probably in some of our discussions here under this particular is to go into the community, have open meetings and allow them to help us decide are there things in the community that they'd like to see us help. How, how do they see economic development? How do they see the future of Berea? You are very correct in that this is going to be a basis for this.
It could be.
So it does have its parallels.
Yeah, it's parallels, but it's not exactly. Because the other piece, people on different sides here, of some saying we need a convention center which should be more like the economic development kind of thing versus a community center where we have opportunities to have meetings locally for citizens and other kinds of activities in that. And it may not, that particular piece may not be an economic development tool.
Or as much as one.
Or as much as one, yes.
The, I think the thought, you can, you can go either way on that, but you might want to ponder whether putting this one out now would result in some information that then the second process would have available in considering to what extent might that be a viable strategy in the quiver of Berea's economic development.
No, no, what, you know, the model that.
Harold then.
The model that I look at.
Okay, you're right.
Diane was involved with it and Glenn was involved. When we did a similar process for the Artisan Center, the model, they did exactly a lot of what we're asking for here. They met with the political leaders, college people, community school, Juana's Club. I mean, they did go into the community and talk to a number of people to shape what we intended to do. So we are going to be doing some of the similar things with this.
Right. Are they a money number that y'all have set to spend on this or is that open to be?
No spending is going to result in this. There is tourism commission ultimately if an award is made. But what this is, is this is asking for proposals within this framework from vendors. And we've asked for lists of people who throughout the state or region or area would, you know, would be capable, would might be interested. And with the project framed, you know, you heard some of those questions. What would they charge to?
We have $30,000 in the budget presently as a line item. We won't be doing this until after July, so getting these in and evaluating then would give us an opportunity to put a number in the budget if we're comfortable with, with the cost for such a study to come back.
I thought we had already decided that we were going to, we were going to use that money to cover the cost of this, of this report.
That's why it's in the budget.
Yeah. But I feel like, in a way, a little bit like Virgil, Diane, you know, we're talking about two different things. And the fact, maybe not to you, but to, if, if you're talking about purely community center, that's one thing that may or may not have economic impact on the community. If you're talking about a tourism slash or convention center, especially if it's funded by the tourism department, then that's, I think, another kind of different animal. And I'm not, all I'm saying is I think that in our own mind, we need to be clear on what we're, what we're asking this particular group of folk to do for us. But, you know, that's just my opinion.
And maybe that's the difficulties. We don't know what it is that we're asking someone to do. And I guess my question is, would this process of developing strategies help us think about that more clearly? And could it, could it be included in the RFP for local economic development strategies? Because I don't see it as totally different, even if it does turn out to be a total community center. So it's, I don't see a very clear distinction between whether it's a convention center or a community center.
How about holding, let's, let's hold this until we move into talking about the local strategy portion of this and bring it back up and consider maybe the two together and decide then whether. What this meeting is to say is that the RFP is ready to go out or not, whatever you all decide. If you want to adjust the parameters, now would be the time. But, but it is written, it's ready to go out, we've, it's budgeted, we've had a request to do it, we talked about it in the strategic planning. But if you don't care, let's move on to the other two items, come back to this, okay? The second, I want to try to get some feedback from you on the Southern Growth Policy Board recent proposal to Richmond, Berea and Madison County to create a Madison County Economic Development Plan for Community Economic Growth. I forwarded to you the version of that proposal that Mark Witt circulated. It is based upon a cost, a proposed cost of $34,750, some of which has been raised through contributions. I anticipate that we have paid, put some money up. We have in the past. I don't know that for sure. And one of the things I'd like feedback from you is, are you interested in participating and would you want to fund any portion of that? There is going to be a meeting on May 9th of a number of parties involved in this discussion at EKU where I guess the future of the proposals will be decided. The proposal in a nutshell is plan, is offering to do five things. Under the auspices and the, and the skills of Southern Growth Policies Board, form a local advisory team, plan and facilitate two community-wide work sessions to identify assets of Madison County, define a vision and decide on an economic development direction for Madison County. Develop targeted strategies to implement the vision. Conduct a third community-wide work session to develop support the strategic direction. All this sounds kind of vaguely similar, doesn't it? And then five, compile a list of community partners then to implement the plan. That's the proposal, Southern Growth Policies Board. They have online a fairly interesting report. The Road to Recovery is named Main Street. You can pick it up by going to the Southern Growth Policies Board website and it's featured there. I'd be glad to pass it around if you want. But it, it highlights their thinking about what local develop, what local communities can do to try to participate in economic development. But are you interested in participating in Southern Growth Policies Board? Do you want to fund any portion of it? Any thoughts?
How is this different from the local economic development study that's going to be done?
The focus will be on.
Rather than just being a little broader.
It'll be on Madison County. The partner, the, the decision makers, let's say, will be Eastern Berea College, Madison County School Board. Those are the big players. There will be a lot of emphasis on inclusiveness, bring people in. I did notice that the Berea School Board was not listed, but I'm sure we could insist that, that they be included, you know. But, but I'm hoping what will happen on May 9th is that the group of those people there will say, we see each of our groups as having circles of interest within Madison County and we see these circles overlapping at this point. And there are three, four, five, six areas of overlapping interests that we could all benefit from by a strategy that pursues that. If they don't do that, I personally will be much less interested in, in this program. But if they go that way, then it could be a supplemental or an effort that might augment or perhaps, you know, in our strategic plan this year, we added a seventh goal, which was to enhance regional cooperation and activity. This is possibly a way of doing it. For instance, Berea has an interest in tourism. Madison County has significant tourism with their all-in classic and, and possibly the presidential debate next year. So there may be opportunities in Madison County for a cooperative, you know, a more, more focused tourism approach. Economic development. The Industrial Authority years ago had proposed at one time that we have a single industrial recruitment effort rather than having two or three directors, one, and then let the companies decide where geographically they were going to put their headquarters or their company. That didn't work then. Maybe that's an idea now. The airport could be an area where the three governments or the greater interests could focus on raising the level of that underappreciated economic development asset. Maybe the depot has potential in the future. I would think those are maybe some of the overlapping circles. But we would have to work, I think, to make it fit BRIS needs. It might not fit BRIS needs automatically, you know.
But I think with the new economic development theories that they talk about, it's not you competing, one community competing against the other, but it's just broader regional kinds of thing. And that's why I think, I think about us not, and if the others are, that's a kind of perception there that I don't think we want at this point in terms of cooperation. And I think it gives us a chance to see what Madison County as a whole, what are the strengths and weaknesses in, in our, than ourselves as we look here locally, what in that microcosm do we have within that context of the growth of Madison County? I think it was a reasonable price for the participation, as I remember from what came out. So I really think we ought to be a part of that conversation. And if it's not going the way it looks like it may be need to, we can move in a different direction.
Others echo that sentiment or disagree? Others echo that sentiment, or disagree, have different counsel?
I agree, I agree with Virgil.
You're going to plow the same ground three times in this year, putting out three sets of consultants, consultant A, consultant B, joint consultant C. Going to be overwhelmed, that's at least two too many consultants, at least.
... with the rest of us. That's right.
Well, we could decide, rather than plow the ground multiple times, we could decide not to do ours.
It's sort of kind of far, I'm sorry.
It's better than a quiver in the arrow.
Quiver.
I really understood your comment.
And plowing.
And it's something we all can think about. Depending on how this goes, it may be more official than us, or all. I don't, I think there's strings and codes for that, that we can...
But I think if we don't at least attend the May 9th meeting and find out really what's involved, that we're not in a position to make a clear decision. I think we need, I feel like...
How much will you authorize me to go to the table with?
Well, you said the whole thing is thirty-one thousand, or thirty-four thousand?
Thirty-five.
I don't think it's going to be that much money. Tom's been talking to them over there. I think dollar-wise, it's going to be minimal, minimal.
I think David's got probably the latest report on the dollar.
We have worked with the Southern Growth Group for the last four years doing community forums and things at EKU. The last I heard, AT&amp;T had committed $2,500, and KU had expressed an interest in receiving a grant application for as much as maybe $8,000. And so the Richmond Chamber and some of the folks with EKU and others have committed others. I would say we're probably two-thirds of the way there.
How much has the Berea Chamber committed?
We haven't committed any yet, but that's something that will be called upon probably on May the 9th to belly up.
How much have you guys, how much?
We haven't allocated any yet. I think from the get-go, we had committed mainly to help in in-kind types of things, and putting together meetings and some of those. But, you know, ultimately, it's probably going to be a financial commitment at some point.
So, I mean, right now, we... Oh, we're Jordans. We're competing every day for engineers and those type workers. We're losing our engineers here at Berea, and they're going over there because they pay almost twice as much as what we're able to pay. So we need to be, I'm like Virgil, we need to be a part of that. We need to be, we need to know what the strategy is going to be, so that we can be a part of that strategy.
Correct.
So that we don't get left in the smoke and the dust that's going to be left behind.
Well, the reason I asked the question at the start, after your comment, was, you know, won't we cover a lot of the same stuff in that study that we cover in that study and this study, which are impactful? I mean, because you're going to be looking at the joint strategies and efforts in Berea while with Madison County, then you're going to be looking at those for Berea, and then you're going to be looking at this structure, which it says on this information, to perform a feasibility, including dot limited to the need for a community center, the market scope, the size of business, and the economic impact. Well, that's the other study we're not talking about yet. But again, it's three studies, and they're all going to be sort of stirring around the same pot, aren't they? I mean, which one's going to come first? The joint... They all going to be taking place sort of together.
I think the joint one is probably moving along.
The Southern Growth Policy Study, I think, will take place. Are we going to be a part?
I think now, the end of the year?
It will start, I think, in July.
I think it's like an eighteen-month process, spread over...
It will happen, are we going to be a part?
Should we do anything additionally to that? You know, if that's going on with this thing, that we also then jump in on our own economic study? And then do we also jump in to study our potential community center? You know, do we want three going on at the same time? That's my question. How much do you want to spend? You can spend as much as you want.
I don't think we might even have to spend any at all on the Southern Growth. Well, he said we could spend a third, if we had a third of the third one, but I don't... I don't think you're going to get that.
There are some, there are some contributors, as David said, that's going to foot the cost and whatever's left. If it's $6,000 left, we split.
The part you emailed, man, I read, it looked like we'd have to spend seven or eight thousand dollars, is what I read.
But it's changed since the injury, with some people coming, some of the...
Take a lot of hinges on that.
What you saw, what you saw, Jerry, is the total cost from Southern Growth Policies.
Just the basic, just the starting cost.
But we have, we have...
And we would have been...
What, the phone company, which one?
AT&amp;T.
AT&amp;T has dedicated some money to this, and the grant process with KU. And so there's some money that underwrite this, and whatever's left, if we raise $10,000, then the $25,000 we split. If we raise $30,000, then $7,000 we split. So it's, it's, the cost has been subsidized by some... What you got would be, yeah, you're right in looking at that, you just abid that up, but there are some subsidy to this.
Well, it's also going to take a lot of time of people in the city of Berea, and maybe people in this room, and all these consultant studies take a lot of time of people, because all they just come in, interview you, and then tell you what you said. You're not going to, and the question is, how long, how many times do you want to be interviewed, and by whom? I'm just suggesting that, you know, the money's only part of it, the time's the other thing. And so you have to take a lot of time to be analyzed by consultants.
I think that their interviews are going to be community forums.
That's it?
Talking about bringing the people together three times.
And just do it that way?
And generating that. But, I mean, those are all valid points. For instance, I mean, we've talked about three things. Do just one. We may do all three. You know, we may do different combinations. It's up to you.
With the new budget, can't we line out on three of them, and be using not? Can we do that with the new budget coming up? Can we do that? Can we do that?
What, what we can do is, I can go to the meeting on the 9th, and I can report to you what the framework is in terms of where they're, the direction it seems. Candidly, one thing that troubled me about the proposal was that the process was going to try to, with two county-wide meetings, come up with a vision of where the county needs to go, and a strategy. And it was singular, a strategy. I'm not sure a single economic development strategy for Madison County is going to embrace enough of the interests of Berea in particular to carry us. And so that's why on the 9th, I want to try to emphasize that there need to be multiple intersections of these circles, and there need to be a number of broad areas of interest that the focus includes our interests, and not necessarily... What it might be. And perhaps I'm reading it incorrectly. But if there was a single one that focused on the opportunities for producing fuel from algae at the depot, we would have ripple effects down here. But I'm not sure that that fully would be where we're going to benefit.
What do you want to benefit from these things?
So, do you want to defer any kind of monetary decision until the 9th, or, you know, after?
If I'm in the 9th, you can see if that's...
There is a, there is a reservoir of interest in terms of being at the table and participating, being a part, being cooperative. There is a certain amount of skepticism as to how much it would really deliver to us, and there has not yet been a commitment as to money, right?
Right.
Okay. Now, the main reason why we're here tonight. The Berea Economic Development Strategies. You know, everybody talked the last year about how jobs was the number one issue, how economic development was important, how the ground underneath our feet is shifting, global economy, recessions, you know, everything like that. Jobs, jobs, jobs. How do we do that? Local economic development strategies. We have a single strategy right now, basically, recruit industry slash retail from outside. Now, it's a little bit more sophisticated than that. It has been being diligently worked, it has worked well for 60 to 75 years. The question is, is it time to sample the community and see if we have, should have multiple strategies, retaining our interest possibly in economic development in terms of the manufacturing plants and retail jobs, supporting that, seeking more? We have a developing opportunities, exciting opportunities that may be coming down the road in the future in terms of sort of traditional economic development. But are there other strategies that we could build upon? And I have suggested, and this is the time to talk about, do we want to try to encourage our community to, and this may be plowing the same ground, as Glenn said, it sounds a lot like what the Southern Growth Policies people were talking about. That's apparently the model that you use. You would have a facilitating group that would convene as many interested parties in our community that were willing to commit over a period of time, and let's just say three to six months, regular meetings during that period of time, in which the facilitator would help this group, inclusive group, identify our assets and our opportunities, understand the various strategies that small towns throughout our region are using successfully to make strides in economic development. And I tried to suggest in that packet of information, you know, some of the, some of the activities that are taking place throughout the southeastern United States. A facilitator sufficiently knowledgeable could help educate and point us in that direction. Receive comment, feedback from people in the, you know, attending. Help us define a preliminary list of strategies that we think might work. Confront the issues that have divided us. And I think there are at least two, there are probably a lot more. But, and this is where convention, community center comes into play, that has, has been a stumbling block. How can we make... Or at least deal with it in a positive way. And the second is alcohol in restaurants. How can that be dealt with in a positive way? Set aside and agree that we leave it alone, or do something with it? Those are two obvious things that would seem need to be talked about. Maybe that can be done successfully, maybe it can't. After that community input, we would hopefully come up with a set of strategies that would include, and in the materials you saw where I tried to list eight or 10, just for discussion purposes, you could have a list like that or a different list. The community center, convention center could be one, as Diane and others have said, or it might not be. That might be the way you deal with it. Or it might be, interestingly enough, the college is talking about expanding Boone Tavern into the bookstore. I mean, this is just concepts and talk, to increase their conferencing. And so it might be in discussions about that, that we try to have a partnership with the college that would increase some kind of a downtown conferencing ability, that would be some type of way of dealing with convention conference. Maybe that come out. And then lastly, if you get some kind of strategy that the community buys into, and if you've done the most important thing, you've involved the people who are ultimately going to be the implementers, like the college would need to be involved, People's Bank would need to be involved, the council would need to be involved, the chamber would need to be involved, tourism would need to be involved, industry would need to be involved, you know, significant players, so that the people who put together this, these strategies are then the ones ready to say, well, we'll take care of this by working on that part of it. And so you've got already, if you have a consensus, you have partners who are there to take the first steps, possibly. Now, it all comes back, I think, to having a talented facilitator who could be somebody that would run these meetings, that would be, that would have rules, that everybody gets to speak, nobody gets hooted down, no idea is bad just because somebody says it. You know, things are written down and analyzed, and you, you know, you learn what an incubator is, you learn what the multiplier effect in tourism does, you, you know, you get these kind of concepts that bring realism possibly to some of these decisions. So... Back to, you know, Diane's question about, do you postpone the convention center, community center, RFP, and try to deal with it as part of that process? Or do you go ahead and put it out and get the information, and then deal with it again, or review it again as the other one takes place, if it takes place?
I think it's, I think it's a good idea, but the important thing is the skill of who's going to run the forum. And I think, I think all of us would learn a lot from our citizens about what they think, whether we like it or not, and whether we do anything or not. I think it's, I think it would be, if nothing else, a great exercise, but hopefully...
Select names of potential firms, individuals, and I have five. Some you'll recognize, some you won't. But I will send this out to you if you're interested. They, most of them have, well, they all have website connections. But Peter Hackbert is the entrepreneurship person at Berea College. He potentially could be. Peter Helly runs Brushy Fork Institute at Berea College. They do that type of citizen engagement type of procedures. There's a person out of Lexington by the name of Steve Kay. There's a woman out of Tennessee by the name of Robin White, Meridian Institute. And then there is another person whose name was suggested, Kim Hobbins. Those are four people who are active in that area. I'm sure there are others, but I'll give you those, that information if you want to. But this aspect of the meeting was in part because Diane wanted to talk about it. I've been trying to disseminate information and encourage the council to consider that. It looks to me like the next step is, are we interested? Would we want to have, would we want to fund a facilitator? To, would we want to send out an RFP? Oh, oh, yeah. Did I send you the RFP proposal? Okay. And... I say I lost it. The scope of work on page five. I won't go through it. The scope of work on page five, I won't go through it, but about two pages there, it lists the type of things that-- would be asked to do or would be asked to bid on. Project division is a series of community meetings to be offered at regular intervals over a sufficient period of time to allow citizens to participate in a process, to assess economic strengths and weaknesses of Berea and identify desirable goals for the economic development strategy, learn about and evaluate strategies being used successfully in other small towns with similar issues as Berea, identify a preliminary list of potential-- front, resolve stumbling blocks to achieve consensus in Berea, such as involving a community center and the sale of alcohol in restaurants. Ultimately, to exist in a physical, all-inclusive, common, self-driving, competitive, that will be the general scope of work of the facility. And the purpose tonight is just to see, give you more information. Maybe the thing to do would be to provide you the names and websites of those people so you could see kind of what qualifications they had and what they did and past projects and does that seem like it would be good for Berea or not. Ask other people to submit those names because all, those names came from other people. Are you interested?
Yes, please.
Anybody not interested?
Why would you not then, go back to Diane's comment earlier, why would you not?
Let's do it.
Because you mentioned them prominently in the scope.
I think you could.
Why would you then hire third sets of consultants later to do that? Again, if your consultancy is all in real life, talking better than these--
Is that a motion?
Yeah, it's not a motion.
That makes sense. That makes sense.
When we talk to the people who are giving us their proposals, I think we ask them that question. And, you know, does it make sense to roll this in here? And then if we do have money here, Mark, then maybe that becomes money that we go into this more in-depth study.
The fundamental question is that the convention center or the community center is a strategy. And if we're going to be talking about strategies, why should it be alone? Shouldn't it be in the mix?
Yeah.
And, and, you know, sink or swim or be a part of a bigger strategy? That makes a lot of sense.
But it should definitely be in there because, I mean, we've made a commitment to, I think, to be--
If, if the consensus of the city keeps it in there, it should be on the table.
On the table, yes.
And end up on the list or not, or, you know, there might be good reasons.
Important how you frame that. And I'm not opposed to it. I think that there's two questions that I keep hearing. One is the feasibility of it, period. And you can use it as an economic development tool. That's fine. The other part is that you don't want your economic development work, strategies, development, to feel like it has to be included as part of that if it shows that it's not.
Not feasible.
Not feasible.
But I think what Glenn was saying was to include that question in the proposal.
I'm just saying that wherever you include it, I think you need to frame it because as I've listened to this conversation over the last ten years, it's two issues going on here. One is, again, a convention center as an economic tool of development. And the other is a community center for people here in Berea to utilize. And where we always got stuck is one has the potential of being funded by, some funded from tourism and also paying for the operational expense where the other one does not have that. Even though it's a quality of life, you still may have two-hundred-thousand-dollar operational expense to run it. And how do you do that? And so it doesn't become an economic development tool, it becomes an economic drain. And I think that that's the piece that we want to make sure. And I'm not opposed to including that in the one, but to frame it so that it's in the context of, is it feasible, which one and why?
And why is it--
Yeah, that's all I'm saying.
I agree. A big percentage of the--
I don't think you would, if I could offer, I don't think that you would bid the search for the facility and feasibility of the convention center together. I think what you'd do is you would postpone consideration of the convention center until you had a facilitator and you went through the process and that process talked about convention centers, community centers, and then you decided if that was going to be one of your strategies, then you might see what would be feasible. But if it's not, you wouldn't do it, right?
Yeah, that's the point. But I'm saying, though, that if you've, it's how you frame it again, because you can frame it-- it becomes part of the strategy. And that's, that's the concern, that's part.
So, folks--
May 9th.
May 9th? We've already taken care of that. The question is, do you want a facilit-- You can go sit over there by yourself. Do you want to do an RFP for a facilitator? Oh, well, again, the next step would be get some, look in May and you'll evaluate and see. But are we moving toward looking at a facilitator to do something like this?
I think, yeah, I think it's what I heard.
What do you think, Glenn? Are you, are you completely against it or--
No.
What do you think?
Not, not, no, I'm not.
Okay. Anybody want the last word?
Could the, think if cities provide somebody as a moderator or--
Absolutely.
I mean, I don't know.
And that's somebody we could assess?
Blueberry's sales have been dropping today. They have a, they can also develop a unit.
I just thought it'd take, although you could say this is about the fairness order, what's happening and so forth. So we're going to have a meeting and we'll let you know what's happening. Okay, thank you for your--